The chambers, if you would please mute your cell phones and anybody who is watching online. Reminder to you to please remain muted. If you are speaking to something for being asked to speak to something or you're asking to speak to something, then you can unmute and speak. We ask you to keep yourselves muted so that we don't have any background noise here in the chamber. Because we can hear everything that comes over the zoom over the speakers here in the room. So all right. I will go ahead then it's six o'clock. So I'm going to call the meeting order. The common council of the city of Glendale is now in session. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovic is absent. Alderman Doherty. Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Wheezy.
Here.
Alderman Schmelsing.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
And Alderwoman Vukovic is expected. She has had a worked something or other and as soon as it.
Right.
And she'll be joining on the zoom as she drives here. So we'll be able to connect to my phone. But yeah. All right. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the 2022 annual program budget and the 2021 American Rescue Plan Fund. We have had the budget published now for a month. We had a meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago, where the city administrator went through every single line item of the budget. We spent probably forty five minutes to an hour going over the budget. So the presentation was done. We've had opportunities for members of the public as well to ask questions. So at this point, I am going to open the public hearing on the 2022 annual program budget and 2021 American Rescue Plan Fund. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against the budget or any concerns, any questions about the budget? There isn't anybody in the chamber. If there's anybody on zoom that wants to speak to the budget, you may unmute. State your name and your address and you'll have two minutes to talk about the items in the budget. And a second call, anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing about the city's proposed budget for the upcoming year. And third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on the 2022 city of Glendale budget. All right, seeing no one wishing to be recognized, I will ask a member of the council to make a motion to close the public hearing, please. I can move Baldorman Doherty, second of Alderman Schmelsing. All those in favor of closing the annual public hearing on the proposed budget for next year, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Before us is a resolution adopting the 2021 American Rescue Plan Fund for the city of Glendale and the 2022 city budget and establishing the 2021 city tax levy. Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please? Move Baldorman Wheezy. Is there a second? Second of Alderwoman Shaw? Any discussion on the resolution? Adopting the budget for next year. All right, I'll move a roll call.
Alderman Doherty. Alderman Gelhard.
Yes.
Alderman Wheezy.
Yes.
Alderman Schmelsing.
Yes.
Alderman Shaw.
Yes.
A vote was unanimous here in the council chambers, five to zero. So the resolution is adopted. And Glendale has a 2022 operating budget for the city administrator and staff. All right, next is a public hearing regarding the final resolution for outreach community health centers project. This, I guess I'll ask the city administrator. If you can just give a brief explanation as what this is.
So the the final resolution regarding the revenue bond financing for outreach community health centers at 210 West Capital Drive. You saw the initial resolution request on September thirteenth of 2021. They have conducted all of the proper documents and went through the process to get their borrowing today. City's bond counsel Rebecca Speckard has reviewed all of the documents and indicated everything is in order for us to be able to go ahead with this resolution. It will not affect anything on the city's bond rating or borrowing status. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, thank you. So I will go ahead and, oh, sorry, any questions from anybody in the council? Alderman Wheezy.
Thank you. Pardon me. The one thing that did strike me as I was driving around and I drove past the property is the land that is owned by them that is directly to the east of their current facility, correct?
It's actually to the west where they're expanding.
West, I'm sorry. I thought it was the east. That negates my.
Okay, yep. And that was, and the, the project that they brought forward was already approved by the plan commission as well. So. All right. Any other questions, members of the council? Alderman Gelhard. You're not, yep, there.
You did myself. For attorney Fuchs, just to clarify, there's, there's no way in which the Glendale, Glendale, the city could ever be on hook for any of what we're dealing with here.
Correct. We're, we're merely a necessary conduit, the way industrial revenue bonds are set up. They have to go through the local municipality, but it's their obligation, not ours. That's why it doesn't apply to our debt limit.
Just wanted to have that on the record.
Thank you. All right, then I'll open the public hearing regarding the final resolution for outreach community health centers project. This has to do with internal or industrial revenue bonds. So anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing regarding outreach community health centers requests of the city? Okay, if there's anyone on the zoom that wishes to speak in the public hearing, you may unmute and state your name and address and your comments. All right, third and final call, anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing regarding outreach community health centers. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I moved.
Second. Move Baldorman Gelhard, second of Alderman Doherty. All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Public hearing is now closed. We have before us the final resolution for industrial revenue bond for outreach community health center project. Would someone like to make a motion to approve, please?
I moved.
Move Baldorman Shaw, is there a second? Second of Alderwoman Vukovic, any discussion? All right, all those in favor approving the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, resolution is adopted. Next, we have a presentation from the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewage District. This is pertaining to the Clutch Park Dam and the Fish Passage Project. So I guess I will turn it over to, I see Mr. Schaefer. And I thought I saw one other person a minute ago, but I don't. Yes, oh Beth, thank you. There's too many, too many things on this grid. All right, so I'll turn it over to Kevin and Beth for a presentation from MMSD.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Schaefer. I'm the executive director of the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewage District. I want to thank you for allowing us to come and talk about the fish, the clutch dam fish passage, which we're now proposing to be on the east bank of the river. So let me turn it over to Beth. She's got a presentation to go through and then we can answer any questions following that. Beth?
Thank you, Kevin. Can everybody see my introduction slide here?
Yeah.
Great. As Kevin mentioned, my name is Beth Wensel and I'm a senior project manager with MMSD and I'm currently managing this.
Have you hung up for just one second, Beth? Megan, I think you need to change our view away from the grid to the the speaker. And then Beth, did you say you shared your screen?
I did. Can you? Thought I did. Screen to share.
Okay, there we go. Your screen is sharing now. Perfect. Okay, go ahead, Beth.
Okay, thank you. So I want to start with a quick illustration of the importance of fish passage at Clutch. So this is an image of the northern portions of Milwaukee and Waukesha counties and southern portions of Ozaki and Washington counties. But you might not recognize them because all of the roads and jurisdictional boundaries are turned off, leaving just the rivers and the watershed boundaries. Before we, you know, manipulated the Milwaukee River, fish used to migrate from Lake Michigan all the way up this, the Milwaukee River, which I'm tracing with my laser pointer here. And would spawn in the upper reaches of the Milwaukee River and tributaries to that river. And of course, when we built a lot of dams along the river, we disrupted those migrations. Several dams have been removed and others have had fish passage routes built around them. And these are the three significant barriers that remain in this portion. Certainly in the southern portion, we've got Estabrook Falls and Clutch Dam. We are currently working on creating a fish passage solution at Estabrook Falls, but we'll be talking more about Clutch Dam this evening. But currently, very little of the Milwaukee River is accessible to Lake Michigan fish. But once we create that solution at Estabrook Falls and if we're able to find a solution at Clutch Dam, we can open up quite a bit more river, including areas up in just downstream of the Bridge Street Dam in Grafton and in Cedar Creek that are known to have the appropriate requirements for reproduction of lake sturgeon, which is an important fish species. That some of you are aware. We're trying to restore lake sturgeon run in the river. We also make available some very important tributaries in that upper, upper reach. So, you know, reconnecting both the upper river and these tributaries is very important for healthy fisheries, which makes fish passage at Estabrook Falls and at Clutch a regional priority. And in fact, it's required to address the Milwaukee estuary area of concern. I might go into a lot of detail on the area of concern, but if you have questions about that, I'd be happy to take them. So Milwaukee County Parks initially managed the clutch fish passage and dam repair project. The alternatives that they were looking primarily at were on the west side of the river and also through the dam. Many of you are aware that there is quite a bit of public opposition to the alternatives that were proposed. And so the county tabled that effort in early 2020. In late 2020, MMSD and county leadership had some discussions about MMSD's ability to help move the fish passage effort forward. And there was agreement to shift management of the project to MMSD. So the consultant contract was assigned to MMSD earlier this year. And I do want to note that the project still includes minor dam repair and maintenance, but there are no park amenities that were previously discussed as part of this project. So we will not be pursuing any park amenities such as an overlook reportage as part of the work that we're doing. So this is the project area. Of course, I mentioned the county was.
Beth, hold on one second. One of the aldermen has a question. Go ahead, Jim.
What are we talking about for dam repairs? That gets thrown in on this and I'm just not really aware of what that contains.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly minor. There's some tree removal that's required near the dam abutments. Primarily so that if, you know, if those trees were to fall, they might do damage to the structure. There's some minor masonry work to touch up on the dam itself. And there are a couple of gate structures that are not currently operable in, in the dam. And DNR has required that those gates be made operable.
My concern is that expand. Gates haven't been opened in extremely wrong, long time. So I guess I'm, some of this I'm finding interesting on the repair side, but please continue.
Yes, we can come back to that. So here's the project area. As I mentioned, Milwaukee County was looking at options that were primarily on the west side and also through the dam itself on the west side. One of the reasons that they were not able to pursue an east side option is they did not, they don't own very much property on the east side. So this is the property or this is the project area. These two smaller parcels in the southern portion of this project area are owned by Milwaukee County Parks. This sort of sideways L-shaped parcel was previously privately owned, but MMSD recently acquired that parcel. And the city of Glendale owns this parcel to the north. And we've had some conversations with Administrator Sastrum and she's indicated that given the public support for fish passage on the east side, using part of that parcel for a fishway could, could likely be considered an acceptable use. So this is the area that we have to work with now. And it is a large enough area to build an effective fish passage. So this is the concept that we're working with. It's a kind of a rough grading concept. These ovals represent resting pools and then these rectangles represent the faster sort of rock lined riffles. So there'd be faster moving water that are steeper sloped and they're short enough that fish can get through them and then rest at the pool on the other side. We refer to this as a nature-like fish way because it mimics a natural stream rather than using like a metal or concrete ladder type structure, which you might see on some of the bigger dams out west because salmon can use those, but a lot of our local fish don't. So water, of course, will be entering on the upstream end and then fish that are migrating upstream to spawn will be coming up on the downstream end. There's an example of a nature-like fish way that allows fish to pass around the Mequon Thien's Bill Dam. They're currently doing some, some modifications in that structure. So if you go up there now, you'll see a construction site. But it has been a very effective fish way and proven to pass a broad range of, of local native fish. Our schedule for doing the work is dependent on available grant funding. The, the project is largely funded by DNR with, with federal Great Lakes Restoration Initiative funds. And we do have funding to complete the design and some site preparation this winter. We could be looking, could be ready for construction as early as fall of 2022. But that, as I say, will just depend on availability of funding and, you know, the regulatory review processes. We have been doing a lot of outreach as part of this project. We've met with landowners on the east side of the river. We've presented to friends of Clutch Park, talked with the county supervisor, and we've had a lot of conversations with city of Glendale staff. And we appreciated Alderman Doherty joining a virtual meeting that we had with some of the neighbors as well. We do have an upcoming virtual community meeting that is, has been advertised and is open to anybody who's interested. It's next Monday at 5:30 and you can sign up at the mkuwaterwaypartners.org. You can also find a link to that on the MMSD website or contact me if you have trouble. Of course, we've also been having regular meetings with county and DNR staff. With that, I'll take any other questions.
Alderman Wheezy.
Thank you. As you, I'm sure you know that particularly right now, the area just below the Estabrook Dam is very, very popular with fishermen. You know, there's a significant number of people out there. I'm amazed at the time of day they're out there. You know, what is to prevent somebody from trying to fish in those, that waterway, the proposed waterway, fish, fish passage, excuse me?
Yes, well, we have had a lot of conversations with DNR about that issue and their intention would be to designate that as a refuge area. So the fishway itself would be off limits to fishing. And as part of that, there would be some additional, you know, DNR warden presence to make sure that that's enforced. So that, that's the, the, the main way in which we would, we would hope that that would be prevented.
Any other questions? Alderwoman Vukovic.
Ever. Can we stop this? I mean, I don't necessarily, not that I want to, but I'm saying, is this just a formality or is this?
This is a presentation about the beginnings of engineering. The project itself still has to come to the plan commission at some point.
Oh, it's, but it does have to go through.
It has to go through approvals.
City of Glendale and it's not just a done deal.
No, 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 no. This isn't a presentation on what's definitely happening. This is a presentation on what is being proposed.
Okay.
Yep. And, and just making sure that we're being informed and we weren't always informed the last time we had questions like this. And now we're being informed on a regular basis. This is just informational.
Okay, I just.
Yep. Alderman Doherty.
I applaud the extra efforts on this. Thank you. Um, as far as the Glendale land that may be used in that drawing, right, we'd never be responsible for cost to maintain that going forward because it's on our land.
That's correct unless we were able to, and we could ensure that if MMSD were to purchase that property and make it a part of their complex as a whole, then, then we would have relinquished that as well.
Thank you.
Alderman Wheezy.
Another question just popped up. Will there be any public access, like nature trails or something for people to just simply observe the fish passing, passing through?
MMSD does not plan to in any way promote public use of the area.
There aren't any public accesses to it. It's surrounded by private property on the north, the east and the south. And so it's not, the only way to get there would be to wait across, the only way to get there publicly would be if you were in your waiting booth going out to, to fish and you worked your way across the river and got there. Otherwise, anybody else getting there would have had to have crossed through somebody else's private property to get to it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Alderman Doherty again.
Yeah, that's, that's always been a question. You guys respected that. I think we end up, if there's a problem on the lane there, we'd have to do something to actually make sure people understood they were trespassing to get there.
Any other, Alderman Schmelsing?
And I believe the, the question is this a done deal? I think there is a repair order on the dam. So that does need to be done to some extent.
That's an obligation.
So, but again, I do question what level of repair is necessary, given the, those gates haven't been open for years. But regardless, I'm happy to see this is moving forward in a way that our residents prefer versus the metal girders that were in the prior plan. So if you could get a word out, I'm trying to look on the website for that public meeting. I don't, I didn't see it on the county's website. I did sign up to get alerts from theirs. If there's a alerting system or something that we could be informed, so we could pass along to our residents, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Beth, could you email me and I'll get it out to the entire council?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Beth. Really appreciate that. Thank you, Kevin. They, we really appreciate the level of communication and making sure that we're aware of things as they're moving forward. So.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak during public comment on a non-agenda item? There's no one here in the, in the chambers. Anybody on the zoom wants to speak, you may unmute, state your name and address. All right, seeing no one wishing to speak during public comment, we'll now move on. The consent agenda has four items, adoption of the minutes of our two meetings we held October 25th and November 3rd, approval of accounts payable and two payments on projects this summer. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please? Move Baldorman Schmelsing, sir second. Okay, second of Alderman Gelhard. Without objection, the consent agenda is considered adopted. Hearing no objections, we'll move on. Item seven, new business review and approval of municipal general obligation loan for 2021 capital improvements program. Miss Saffron.
This is the annual funding for the capital projects for 2021 of the 4.6 million, 3.3 approximately is the tax levy portion. The rest of it is funding the utility projects. And we're requesting approval for the 10-year debt payment at 3% rate.
We're keeping our annual debt payments pretty smooth, correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Is any questions, comments from members of the council? Was I'll call for a motion? So motion to approve the resolution to receive the Wisconsin Board of Commissioners Public Lands Municipal General Obligation Loan in the amount of $4,625,000. Move Baldorman Doherty, is there a second?
Second.
Second of Alderman Wheezy, any discussion? Does this require a roll call, Mr. City Attorney?
If it's unanimous, you're fine. But otherwise, you're, the rule is that you have to be able to show which way each alderman voted.
Okay. All right, well, I'll just, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next item, item seven B, review and approval of planned development agreement for Chick-fil-A at 5201 North Port Washington Road.
This is the final stage of the planned development for the Chick-fil-A at 5201 North Port Washington Road. All specific implementation plan was approved at the last plan commission meeting, which was last week. So the development agreement with the attachments is before you for approval.
Um, are they normally 81 pages?
No, this one, their site plan was lengthy and we wanted to make sure that everything was in there. It actually.
Bayshore agreement was about 80 pages.
Right. We did, as far as references for the stormwater plan and the traffic state study, we only included the cover page. So it's actually less than what it could have been.
Gosh, okay.
By, by the way, the initial Bayshore agreement is probably closer to a thousand pages.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's that bound red book on both sides.
Okay. I've seen one agreement that's stapled together and it's about probably 70 or 80 pages. So that must be the condensed version. Got it.
One of the eight or nine amendments.
Oh, gosh. All right. So is there a motion then to approve the planned development agreement with Chick-fil-A? So move. Move Baldorman Doherty, second of Alderwoman Shaw, any discussion? Alderman Gelhard.
There was a, an article about Chick-fil-A this last weekend. Did everyone see that? That one of the things that they highlighted was 30% of customers that go to Chick-fil-A turn around and leave because the line at the drive-through is too long. It was like a portent of things to come here in Glendale.
I saw that article.
I find that interesting because I've sat in line and the longest I've ever sat in line was about four minutes and that was Menominee Falls. They just opened and they were just moving slow as they were just opening and getting through things, but four minutes was the longest I've been in line and I've gone to Capital Drive.
Right. So the development agreement has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is approved. Glendale is getting a Chick-fil-A. After two and a half years of working with them to find a location that would somehow elite, I guess accommodate all the traffic and we're still concerned. Oh goodness.
You left turn lane and everything.
Yep. All right, next item seven C, application for change of zoning for 1616 West West Bender. Is this supposed to be Bender Road, is it?
Yeah, it should be West Bender Road. I apologize. It, I believe is, oh gosh, it's not correct anywhere. Copy and paste. It is 1616 West Bender Road. It's a referral to the plan commission. It is the Dichora facility that was across the street from the Dove Healthcare. Very excited to have this come before us so that we do not have that same situation as we did have with Dove Healthcare. They are going to be at the next plan commission meeting with your approval and just not much change to the exterior is necessarily anticipated. It's more interior and making them apartments with the proper mode of parking. Greg DeBorkin is on the call if you have any questions for him. Otherwise, it's a referral to plan commission and staff recommends that you refer.
All right, any comments or questions for members of the commission? Alderman Schmelsing?
I'm just very happy to see that be developed. I was there for the assessment process and the highest use was considered that type of facility. So I'm glad to see it's residential still and everything.
All right, can I have a motion then to refer the application for change of zoning for 1616 West Bender Road to the plan commission, please? So move. Move Baldorman Doherty, is there a second? Alderman Schmelsing, second. Alderman Wheezy, did you want to speak? Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to compliment the developer for maintaining the facade and the whole structure is.
No, I just wanted to compliment the developer for maintaining the facade and the whole structure is, it's not a bad looking building. It fits nicely. And it's good, you know, reuse of a existing facility.
Thank you. The discussion, call for a vote. All those in favor of referring this rezoning application to the plan commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, item seven D, review and possible approval to begin process to dissolve the Esterbrook Corporate Park Owners Association.
In 1990, the Esterbrook Park Owners Association was created. It was a part of the original TIF four. And the association had some parcels that the city of Glendale owned. And with it, when parcels were sold, there were some deed restrictions put in. But one of the other things that happened with the association was that the neighbors could comment on changes that were happening to facilities in the area. Uh, as it comes, uh, we have a request that could be forthcoming from the Orthopedic Hospital of Wisconsin. And quite frankly, one of the the few things they would have to go through is a request to send out to the other association members for their opinion or comments on their plan. As we look into the association documents further, overall, its usefulness may have expired. So with your permission to direct City Attorney and myself to begin the process to dissolve the Esterbrook Corporate Park Association as it's not necessary.
Those deed restrictions aren't in place anymore.
They're still in there and they're, but it's actually on the property deed, so they, so if they have, like, the fact that they don't have tax exempt parcels, that's in the property deed.
The deed restrictions will stay, the association interaction and requesting permission from each other, that will go. But that was done because we were a property owner in the area way back then.
Right. We wanted to say what was going on.
Well, that's correct, yes.
Got it. All right. So then do we have, I guess, what do you, do you want us to?
A motion to direct staff.
Motion to direct staff, okay. All right, can I, I'll have a motion to direct staff to start the process to dissolve the Esterbrook Corporate Park Owners Association, please.
So moved.
Move by Alderman Gelhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second of Alderman Shaw, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item four E, out-of-state travel requests from me. Uh, you saw the memo from the city administrator. The Bay Shore owners were invited to be part of a lunchtime conversation panel at a center build convention. I guess it's a big thing of developers and merchants and stuff that get together. And they asked me if I would join the panel. So if you authorize this, we'll cover a plane ticket and airfare. I'm actually staying with my college roommate who lives not just down the road from the convention center, so I fly out December 1st, speak on December 2nd and be at the convention and then fly back the morning of December 3rd. No, that's round trip and the car.
I thought these would usually be in February.
One moved.
Move Alderman Shaw is our second.
Second.
Second of Alderman Gelhard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Yeah. Uh, next, resolution authorizing execution of the DNR principal forgiven financial assistance agreement. Miss Saffron.
This should be the last step in the grant process from the DNR for the lead lateral replacements. So there was a portion of it that was coming from the federal ARPA funds. There's a portion that comes from federal DNR, but this is the last approval to be able to receive those funds. So we do recommend approval of the res- resolution.
All right, can I have a motion then to approve the resolution, please?
Or move.
Move Baldeman Weezy, second of Alderman Doherty, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item four, seven G is review and approval of winter newsletter.
Uh, before you is the winter newsletter. Uh, most of the items are standard indication of the voting of treasurer for tax collection, uh, different dates for garbage collection and some things from the fire department, I believe. Uh, we did make sure that if there is regular service for the Christmas and New Year's holidays, it is listed in there just regular service. There is no delay for those holidays, even though December 24th or 31st would be considered a holiday for some people. It does not kick that because the GFL does work on those Fridays specifically for District Four.
All right, any discussion on the newsletter? Any corrections, any suggestions? Alderman Weezy.
Thank you. Um, Rachel, on page three, it says disposal of large bulky or non-hous- household waste. It, okay, it says bulk item pickup furniture, four feet or less of rolled carpeting. People, you know, you're only gonna have four feet of carpeting allowed?
They're supposed to cut it up.
But it, okay, but it just the way it reads for.
You could have a stack of a whole bunch of four feet.
Yep.
Yeah, they have to be, okay.
And rolls.
The reason I'm asking is that may need to be rephrased because people could read that and say, oh, I'm only, I can only get rid of four feet of carpeting.
Okay, they, they have to call for pickup anyway, so there's usually clarification at that point as well. If there's a question, but that's the verbiage we've been using for the past few years.
All right, do we already do the motion to approve the newsletter? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the newsletter? Move Alderman Shaw, who's gonna second?
Second.
Second of Alderman Schmelsing, any other discussion?
I like the clip art.
I was just gonna say that the graphics are looking better and better every newsletter, so. Yes, and and the nice thing is, is like getting professionalized in this newsletter when we go to put the map eventually in here of the Aldermanic districts, which, uh, that's not in this one. When's the next one go out?
Uh, the next one doesn't go out until, um, March. It should go up before the April election, um, but with any changes to Aldermanic districts, we've already indicated we're gonna do a postcard to every household.
Okay, all right.
Which will be on the next agenda.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say the map won't be hand drawn like it was 10 years ago.
With, and colored in with.
And colored in with colored pencil. Yes, the graphics of everything are getting much better. All right, so, uh, Alderman Shaw.
My comment is I'd like to say thank you to Kayla for putting in the 414 since now we have to dial it.
All right, any other comments? All the favor of approving the winter newsletter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, uh, item H, approval of resolution to divide the city of Glendale into wards pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 5.15 sub four. And I guess with that is also approval of the ordinance. Could we do both at the same time? But they have to be done separately?
I'm gonna suggest you do them separate because they could result in separate actions relating to one or the other item.
So this one is pretty straightforward. We had the emergency meeting last week. We unanimously approved the changes to the maps. This is just all the resolution language now that spells out exactly what's in that map. And then the ordinance that describes exactly what each Aldermanic district's boundaries are. So any questions or conversation before I ask for, oh, yes, Alderman, or sorry, Alderman.
So, um, on page one of the resolution, uh, and I just noticed it, it's five, it's a many-page resolution. And I, I missed it the first time around. On the very bottom census blocks, the first block is identified, the second block is identified, and then there's a stray number one. So this is gonna be approved with the correction of removing that stray number one in that first line of census blocks on page one.
Okay.
You see it?
Yeah, we can consider that a typographical.
It's right, it's just a typographical error, but I just wanna verbally state that so you realize that there's gonna be a change and that's how small it is.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution to divide the city of Glendale into wards pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 5.15 sub R? One, sorry, 5.15 sub R. Move Alderman Shaw. Is there a second? Second of Alderman Vukovich, any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. And then the second thing, just along the same lines, is the ordinance language amending section 2.1.3, which then spells out in our city ordinances, all the boundaries of each Aldermanic district. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance? Move by Alderman Weezy, is there a second? Second of Alderman Shaw, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. I just want to say our municipality, three times now, last week and twice tonight, had to vote on redistricting maps and the dis- and the vote was unanimous. I wish other legislative bodies could figure out how to, how to not gerrymander districts and how to draw boundaries that everybody looks at and goes, yeah, those make sense. And everybody votes to approve them. So thank you to all of you for, for your input on the, on the maps, but also the fact that we've, we just redistricted the entire city and everybody was in agreement because it just made sense. So thank you. Thanks for showing that it can work. All right, next, item J, discussion on potential referendum for a possible Glendale library. As you know, we are still talking with the other communities, but we are also still pursuing the path of our own library. Because if one of them fails December 31st, we gotta be ready to do another one. So tonight, the city administrator is giving us an update on where we are with, uh, moving forward on a Glendale-only library if the other agreement fails.
So before you, uh, two items, uh, that I put on as attachments, one of them is a taxation FAQ from the League of Wisconsin municipalities, identifying what kind of verbiage, uh, we would need to do for a, uh, resolution in addition to the sample resolution that would need to be passed in order to get something placed on, uh, a ballot, uh, most likely in uh, April is what we're anticipating right now. Along those lines, um, just putting together a draft operational budget, uh, the budget is based off of the North Shore Library and the services that they currently provide. Uh, we do not have to go to referendum for debt service. Um, we are allowed to raise levy as our debt increases, therefore anything we would spend on the structure of the facility and those capital costs for initial funding would not have to have a referendum.
Let me ask this, though.
You could.
Right, but if, if we borrow, that would take up some of our capital borrowing for a particular year, or it would increase the amount we, we borrow, which would increase our debt payments.
It will increase your debt payments, which would increase your tax levy necessary for.
So basically, I, my personal feeling is if we're gonna ask people if they're willing to have their own library, I, I don't think we should do the end run of saying, well, if we borrow the money, we don't have to ask for a levy increase. When the levy is going to basically increase, they're gonna pay more without ever having had an opportunity to vote on it.
There, there is that opportunity as well. Um, so there, there's a couple of ways to do it and that's one of the, the thoughts behind it is you don't have to. And we do have a plenty of debt margin available, um, 65 million to be exact. And then, uh, we can also, uh, put into the FAQs for the referendum that approving the operational automatically means we need the capital to go along with it. Um, one really can't go without the other. If we approve to move forward on our own library, we have to have the capital expenses. So if you want a second specific question, then the question comes up, if they approve one and not the other, how does that work?
I think it would be, it would be one question. Are you willing to fund a Glendale library with a one-time capital expenditure of approximately X? And an increase in the amount we pay every year on the library by about $600,000?
So your verbiage per state statute has to be extremely specific. So the first question would have an end date on the tax levy increase because the debt would end after 20 years. So it, it's for a certain amount of time. Operational would be indefinite and would not identify an end date, so you couldn't put it in the same question. I know it's very challenging. This is why we're discussing.
Yeah. Others?
Challenging, but I agree with what Brian said. We gotta really, people gotta really understand what this would run and are they in favor of it? Cause there's strong feelings on all sides from what, uh, my constituents, so I wanna make sure we'd ask that correctly.
Two questions. Okay.
So the, the $600,000 difference between what we pay now and what this would be. What is that roughly $600,000? What does that amount to in terms of like average tax levy?
I did not bring that with me. Um, I know that that was a question that we had and I want, I can't state for certain.
Okay.
It, it was.
Less than 100.
It, it was less than a dollar per, per, uh, per hundred thousand that I know I'd wanna. Yeah, not 100%, but I'll have that with the next set of information that.
Okay. Other questions?
Got something?
Yeah, Alderman Schmelsing, go ahead.
So it would have to be then two questions. One would say to support the operational cost and we'd have to assume some level of, of capital borrowing if we were to do two.
It, so one was be for the operational, the second would be for the capital. The biggest challenge with the second question is accuracy because we would be asking a question without having any type of a building. We don't know which building or, or location. Nor would we know the estimated renovation costs of said buildings. So, um, very hypothetically, let's say there's a building on Gene Nicolay that's an office building. I don't know. Hypothetically, there could be, uh, this building could be, uh, good, however, what is the weight load of the second floor? And what kind of renovations would be needed for that? You need all sorts of architectural and engineering review to be able to identify a, a solid number. Um, so I don't know that that would be it because then the second option is, is there a building across town somewhere else? And would that be a better fit? Um, but we'd need that same analysis. So, or would we want to put it in at a maximum borrowing amount saying that they're authorizing us up to, but we can't exceed that? Um, are, would we put in, and I got, I'm not 100% that that's viable. I, I have to double check with the state on their language in the statute, but I just wanna say the capital is going to be the hardest part because it's the largest unknown. Operational, probably pretty close.
If we owed, if we were like a lot of cities when they build a library, they already own the parcel of land. They go get architectural renderings and price out what the architectural rendering is gonna cost and then they go to, right. We're not, and then we don't have the land, we don't have a building, we don't know renovation costs, we don't have any, okay, any of that background data. All right, any other questions? All right, well, thank you for the update. Next, commission committee and board reports, and I will start with Alderman Vukovich.
Thank you.
Alderman Doherty?
I think I reported it.
Alderman Gelhard?
A board of appeals met last Wednesday and we ran variances to the two petitioners that appeared before us.
Thank you. Alderman Weezy?
I think this evening.
Alderman Schmelsing?
Uh, we have our first Fourth of July meeting coming up this, um, next Tuesday, the 16th. So everybody get the word out if you have anyone who likes to plan parties. We also have donuts. But, uh, yes, we, we do need help to get this pulled off. We've had some attrition over the years with COVID and such with the last events. So we'll be looking to potentially get back to more like what we had in 2019 fundraising allowing. So, um, yes, please, uh, send people my way. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Shaw?
Isaac and the Glen will be meeting this Wednesday at City Hall at 5 o'clock. Yeah. Been a long week already. It's only Monday. And North Shore Library Board will be meeting next Thursday, the 18th. I will not be able to attend because I have to work. But I also want to put in there, uh, thank you to the, uh, Administrator Saffron and Deputy Administrator Lancer for all their hard work they did on putting the budget together and getting that squared away for all of us. And also to thank, um, City Administrator Saffron as well as all the folks that helped her assist with the maps to get those right for the boundaries. I do appreciate all the hard work because you don't see a lot of it and I know it's not easy.
Thank you. I've been sure Saffron.
Um, I know I'm not agenda, but you're gonna, you're gonna have to listen to me anyway.
We, we agreed, no, it may have been missed on the agenda here, but we did agree that the city administrator would be part of our commission committee and board reports from that. Like two or three meetings that go forward, so.
Um, Port Washington Road has some things going on, wine and spirit building. Port Washington Road has some things going on. Wine and Spirit Building next to Board Game Barristers being demolished starting today. So that's been exciting to watch this afternoon, this morning. Also, if anyone has been by Bay Shore, Culvers is out of the ground, walls are up. It looks like they'll be enclosed shortly. Now they just need some electricity. And the mayor and I will be conducting interviews for Welcome to Glendale Executive Director this week.
Thank you. And then, see, MMSD met this morning. The only thing I would have reported out of that was the update we got on the Clutch Dam repairs and the Fish Passage, but they were already agended for a presentation tonight, so I don't need to talk about that. ICC met this afternoon. A heated discussion about our feelings, all the chief executives, on how the process for redistricting went. I don't think any of us were very pleased with with this process. We're working with the county. On our municipal levels, we all said everything went beautifully. We just wish we had known before, like, three days before we had to vote, that we had to make our own maps. So yeah, because we we're one of the many municipalities that turned it over to the county, and then the county failed to do anything with our maps, and so we ended up having to do them ourselves at the end. So so yes, thank you to Rachel and Megan for the the time spent working with folks from from Sewer PAC to help get those maps together. But the other thing that came up today, and I actually brought this issue up, you probably have seen in in the paper that some Milwaukee area legislators are proposing a piece of legislation that would allow for red light cameras. I vehemently oppose those, and I brought it, I had actually asked to have it on the agenda today, and we had a discussion about them. And I would say that like across the county, there are some people that are like, well, I want more information, and how can it be a tool that we can use? A couple of us are like vehemently opposed to them because they basically are like a scam. And then some other people mentioned these license plate, was it Alper? Yeah. Yeah, can you, what what are those? How do those work? Because so those are not run by a private company. Those are actually run by the police, like the police actually get the data, they do something with it. It's not some private company in Arizona, like the red light things are.
There we go. You buy cameras, it's a computer. The cameras read license plates, and it has real time information, the Department of Transportation. So they put a hot list in once every twelve hours. So if there's a stolen car, that information gets put into, it's through DOT, that gets downloaded into the camera. If, or into the computer, so if the camera reads that license plate, that it will alert the officer that that was a stolen car that just went by. So it, not a third party. In fact, we looked at that Bay Shore at one point, wanted to buy ALPR camera systems. And they wanted to buy the cameras and let us use it. And we said that you could not do that because there was no way that we could separate DOT data from what they wanted. So it's all within the police department.
So that that'll be an ongoing discussion. So at this point, mayors and village presidents are all intrigued about this red light camera bill, so. So that was the other big thing that I brought up today. Other than that, the the third item, and then I'll I'll call on you in a second. The third item that we spent a significant amount of time on is Rob Henkin from the Wisconsin Policy Forum, and Guy Smith, the Milwaukee County Parks Director, gave a presentation today basically about how we don't have any money for the parks. But when Rob Henkin does it, there's all this data, and you can see a forty year trend and realize that we've been defunding the Milwaukee County Parks for the last forty years. I mean, we're at a point now where it gets more in revenue than than the tax levy. And and that's just like, I mean, it's basically, they're they're, the only way they're keeping any money at all for the parks is by having a marina and golf courses and charging to get into pools and renting space for beer gardens. And so there was a discussion today about, yeah, I guess the beginning of a discussion about how how involved municipalities might wanna be in the process. They had the same presentation this morning, actually, in MMSD, and it was, does MMSD wanna be able to be involved in some of the parks? Especially because there's a lot of stormwater management and green infrastructure stuff within our county parks that MMSD has done anyway. But one of the examples brought up today is Greenfield essentially took over running Quickie Park a number of years ago. They spend more than we spend on Mizlowski Park every year. But but they basically do the maintenance of the park because it's the only way, they it they kind of view that as their city park. And the county owned it, and they were tired of the county neglecting it, so they took it over. And so there was a discussion today about municipalities possibly wanting to take over parks. I'm not saying that we wanna take over Clutch Park, because I think that would be expensive. But if we ever get to a point where, you know, it it becomes, it becomes severely neglected for lack of funds, you know, that may be a conversation we have, is setting up an intergovernmental agreement and and looking to help take over the park and run it, so. Or maintain it at least.
Why just stay on that?
Can't hear you.
Trend is true, and it's not, it's not healthy.
No, it's not. And and you know, the the parks are, you know, Milwaukee has historically had one of the best park systems in in the country, if not the world. And and, you know, to have it be neglected for so long. And and it has been like a whole series of county boards and county executives. You can't blame one person for anything. It's just, it's forty years of neglect. So, yeah. Alderman Schmelzling?
Yeah, because on that same note, like, we already do to some extent have local communities supporting the parks through the Friends programs.
Sure.
And we do lots of volunteer cleanup work and and otherwise, and so it it's very unfortunate, but I think it might be a reality that municipalities might need to help at some point, because it does represent our community. It's like.
We're lucky that our facilities are okay right now, but like one of the things they had to do in Quickie Park was in their annual borrowing one year for their capital stuff, they borrowed to rebuild the pavilion. So I mean.
We can't even get paint money for the pavilion.
Yeah. Yes. All right, so that is my report.
Question. Chief, what else can they do for cars that have no plates? Because actually, when I watch people running lights every day on Silver Spring, no plates is probably eighty percent of the people running them.
Asking about the ale.
Yeah, I mean, you can't scan no plate.
Yes, it doesn't, it it won't scan no plates. It does scan mailboxes sometimes, but that doesn't really.
I haven't seen them committing anything that bothered me yet.
A box, pretty good.
But it happens.
Well, because it's looking for numbers and letters in a block format, so, yeah. All right, we are noticed now to, for the common council to convene in closed session for Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one sub E. This is deliberating on or negotiating the purchase of public property. And investment of public funds. We also, so we're gonna be discussing potential sale of property at fifty three thirty five North Edgewater Lane. And then also we're to discuss negotiations. So this will be our police union negotiations for their collective bargaining agreement. So can I have a motion to convene in closed session, please?
I moved.
Move Alderman Shaw, who's my second. Second, Alderman Weezy. All those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we will move into closed session. We are going to have some items for consideration after closed session, so.
Yeah, there is.
All right, we've reconvened in open session. We had two discussions in closed session. One was on the status of the police union negotiations, a final report on the contract. And the second was on a potential sale of of a city property. It was indicated on the agenda. But we do, we are noticed for one additional item of business after getting the update on the police union negotiations. We have been presented with a twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four agreement with the Glendale Professional Police Officers Association Local two one two. The police have already ratified the agreement, and it is before the council tonight. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the collective bargaining agreement with the police for the next three years?
Um, second.
Move Alderman Weezy, second, Alderman Shaw. Any further discussion? Okay, Alderman Gellhard.
I just wanna introduce a proposal by the city, and I think that's why they've already ratified it, so.
Thank you. For the collective bargaining agreement, is this the one that? Some of these things I remember needed, I've just been doing everything by voiceover for a while, so.
It has to be approved in open session. It does not have to be a roll call vote, but you do have to be in open session when you.
Got it, yeah. All right, all those in favor of adopting the collective bargaining agreement with the police union for the next three years, please say aye.
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 Me opposed, no. Okay, motion carries. All right. Yep, thank you. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gellhard. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
No, we stand adjourned at seven twenty nine PM.